All right, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the Monmouth Planning Board. By eleventh meeting. Stephen O'Donnell, the Chair. We have a forum here tonight, Ray Simon, David Mills, Rick Grant, Dave Shaw. Heard from both Larry and Bonnie. Bonnie had surgery today. Larry's out of town. He's on vacation this week. So we'll have Dave Shaw as the voting member tonight. You want to pass on the minutes for now and come back to those if they're in our meeting?
Yep, good idea.
So we haven't heard anything from Lake Star. I haven't heard anything.
They're passing tonight.
They're at table.
We're requesting a table.
Okay, Soul America, we got an email a couple of days ago. The project manager is no longer with the company. So they want to table until the August meeting to see what they might want to do. So I will entertain a motion to table.
Table, further request.
Any discussion? All in favor of tabling? Anamis. All right. So new business. We have Aaron Parity, which is an amendment to a subdivision and Paul was in, Paul Roof was in. I think it's the last meeting to kind of do a pre-application discussion. We have a motion to Well, I think, Paul, you told us this is a matter of just
That's correct.
Transferring to the large lot to a neighbor.
That's correct. If you look at the plan, the neighbor of Olivieri, first on the fact that you should have the application. Accessories, we have the joiners list. The deeds, deed for Aaron Parity and the deed for the neighbor. Is that on the Pressy Road? There are the all these, what is it, eight dash two? Sixty plus acres, sixty acres. They really wound up in subdivision because fifteen, I think it was, thousand four, maybe? Aaron or attorney, somebody didn't watch the dates of the papers. Right? He had sold one lot previous, he sold another, conveyed another lot to when Freeman, contractor, and of course the remainder lot because mom is so simple. Three lots, when somebody wanted it. Came in and then, yeah. Well, me, Paul, nervous, manage your time, simple. Well, there we are, twenty years, when the lot that was for, went to Quinn Freeman at the time is now old, Freeman conveyed Olivieri, that's eight pitch. One one, yeah. All right, well, Mr. Olivieri wants to buy, they agreed with that, three acres. Aaron's gonna remain, keep the rest, so see the new proposed lot line. This Olivieri gets thirty, Aaron has thirty something.
Seventy four, one?
Thirty four, yeah. Yeah, I hadn't do any stormwater. I mean, it's very low intensity, there's nothing there. So Olivieri basically wants to land, I guess, he just doesn't want anybody developing on him. Put the tree line on there because that's the, that's the essence of what he's looking at. There's a field there between the tree line and the road. Olivieri wants some of that. Maintained a little more than the twenty foot setback from the garage on the Parity property. Plan was updated to show the house that he now resides in. They did put in a underground utility line across the property to serve the southerly joiner, which used to be part of the Parity family. Left James Parity to Wayne Parity. Wayne Parity is, earlier this year, just sold to Rand, I believe his name is there. So that's why if you go and check the accessories database for the town, you're not going to find his name listed yet. They all fit the deeds. They do reside at Pressy Road.
Is it a CMP easement or?
No, there's no reasons. It's for table, fiber optic table. Oh, a CMP that'd be an ease.
Yeah.
No, this is just, they, they just trenched, put a small trench there and put a line through there. Show the location of the easement, that was obvious. It's just done, but there, there's nothing of record in registry.
So this is the entire reserved lot that is going to Olivieri?
No, only part, part, part and part of it, split in half, split in half of it.
So there are two lots affected?
Well, there's one lot affected, creating two lots, but it's, I obviously it's going to on the joiner, so, yeah, so there's, I guess there's two lots affected.
And so you're asking for, Wayne lives on stormwater management phosphorus. Do we have a motion to waive those submission requirements? Stormwater and phosphorus?
Move every way. Submission requirement.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
You want to say, is it?
I don't think it's, I don't think so. I guess we'll, I'm mostly will accept the application then as presented. I'm making a motion to accept.
The only thing we need to know.
Anyone have the fee schedule here?
The subdivision fee is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, it's two, yeah. There's an amend, there's a fee for an amendment. It's so much per lot. And then the basic fee. I think it's two lots plus the amendment fee. Somehow I don't have that new schedule. I I tried to consolidate some papers and must have left. You have that, Darcy?
Well, I've got the proposed new fee schedule.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah. So subdivision is supposed to be a fee for amendments.
Yeah, I didn't see it. I called it subdivision fee, but I didn't see the amendment fee. I believe in the past, you, one hundred and twenty five.
Yeah. Let's see, this.
That's approved.
Yeah. Well, I think it would be thirty, one hundred and twenty five plus one hundred and thirty lots, seventy five per lot.
I'd like to review, Mo, I want to. No, and there's a more list of the joiners.
Yeah, so we got to send out notices. No, I don't, did we vote on accepting the application?
I got a motion by Dave Shaw, but no second.
Only second.
All in favor of accepting the application? We'll have a fee of two seventy five, notices to abutters. Don't think we need a site visit? Anyone feel we need a site visit? Pretty straightforward.
That what we're going to charge now, two hundred and seventy five?
One, well.
One hundred and two and seventy five.
One twenty five plus seventy five per lot, the number of lots affected.
I'm going to put it in here, so I have.
Yeah, you may have to make sure that's. I'll check my records.
For future work.
Yeah.
I'll either have Aaron or myself will get it checked.
Yeah, and then we'll, we should be able just to go through the checklist. Okay, the abutters list is good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I like it. Yes, that's current. The only one different you're going to find in the town records is Mr. Rand.
Right. That was just conveyed a couple of months.
Your address is fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Paul, we found Wilson Bliss?
Yes.
Well, there's two people not here. Where is this park?
All right. And the applicants, Mr. Missus, it's going to be a area and air, here in the sea.
Welcome. A pretty large park?
Yes, it is. It's off Wilson Pond Road, over drive. Drive down in there. Oh, it's on Wilson Pond. Now, it submitted, I submitted a packet tonight because when I submitted the packet back in July two, I did not receive the applicant's signature. That's the one page that you sent. In addition to that, the plan that you received tonight reprinted because the plan that was in the original package, the contour elevations did not fit out, so that's what you're looking at. The contours are correct, but they have a trouble getting value of the contour. Put it out, so the plan that you received tonight was that, so, Dave. I know contours are not asked for, you know, typically in a shoreline application. But this case here, if the site has some significant constraints.
I was bound. It does.
Yes.
Have a slope?
Yes, it's a significant slope's going in there. So they want to provide the contours. The application is to replace the existing structure with a new structure and you have building elevations revised again with that. Essentially, we're trying to move, we tried to move the proposed building back a little bit as much as we can considering the slope and the constraints on that. Plus the proposed building would fall within the parameter that provided a table of testing, building footprint areas, portions, et cetera, like that, and the proposal, so. My original take is correct, it should be all under the allowed criteria for an expansion of the structure.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, it's less than that thirty percent.
Are they going to totally remove the old building?
I believe so, yes, yes.
Been there for a while.
They do have a new proposed subsurface disposal system up on top, the, above. There's a note on the plan that took the information from the HHG two hundred that the pump still needs to be sized and so on like that. He sized it for, I think, the appropriate number of bedrooms, but it would be too much force, you know. Be a significant lift.
Can't remember, is there a well on the spot?
Pardon?
Is there a well on the spot?
There is a well.
All right, yeah, it's up against the old tower.
The stability, safe. But this evening, we're just requesting the acceptance of the application. Obviously to schedule a site visit. No, you're going to make a site visit. Well, erosion control on the construction is going to be a lot of steps going down to the water.
Oh, yes. It's showing like a little shed building?
Yeah.
That's going to be gone.
That's about the only building. Obviously there's still, here, but they're on joint.
It just had a work, work class on erosion control and this one might might work into the three-stage new system that they've, they're working on, three different.
I suggested a couple of different methods. Because I don't know off the top of my head whether steel fence is going to be totally appropriate. Obviously erosion exit, obviously filtration stock.
That's three.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty, it's pretty steep from where the building is now down to
Down to the lake, yeah, and even if they stayed, like they were trying to pull it back, but
Into the bank.
We're into the bank. You know, they want testing now because the last couple that they said it was very rough to see them. So well.
Regular. All that you get in Home Depot.
Must be some soda, right?
Supposed to be, and it's supposed to be root stock, not a tree stock.
Five gallon bucket and full of water and shovel full, three quarters of it, must say.
Quite a distance from the after with this new section.
Yeah, oh, yes, yeah, yes. Not only distance or it's not away, but distance verticals.
Yeah.
I think that it's over a hundred elevations there. I haven't been able to find the site evaluator's flags or mark, because he did that in twenty twenty one. I've been looking, but I haven't.
But you think the system is going to be outside shoreline?
Yes.
Other than slope may put it into resource protection? There are.
Basically, the HHG two hundred is showing that it's a true unfortunate coverage of slope.
Limited number of abutters.
Probably listed more than necessary. They not listed the abutters, the joiners across Wilson Pond Road, because I mean, several hundred feet, you know.
No impact on.
Ones in immediate effects will be the spencers. And sheen. First and worst have already taught the sheen.
Well.
I know there's a minimum fee of fifty dollars.
No, well, no, it's not. It's we changed it to value a product, project. So fair market value of all labor and materials associated with the project with prior review. So I'm assuming it's above a hundred thousand, so it would be one twenty five plus fifty dollars for each additional fifty thousand dollars, so we need an estimate of what the
total project.
With the pride, you know, pride.
You don't have that yet, do you? Your budget. What's your budget for the project?
Probably like six hundred thousand dollars.
Say half. Five hundred thousand probably.
Yeah, we guess that. Looks like it would be five twenty five if we said five hundred thousand. Be a five twenty five, except. That's about right, it's five hundred thousand. I can't believe it's going to be any less. Seems like a reasonable. And site review visit, we want to do it two or three weeks. It's about the eleventh, so we do the twenty fifth.
They ask you to please defer from the first.
Twenty fifth, twenty fifth, that what's the earliest you could get there, Ray?
I'm sorry?
What's the earliest you could get to a Thursday site visit?
Twenty six.
We're going to have another one.
We have two?
Well, I think so. We got another shoreline project and we do it five thirty, can you give that a go?
I won't make it to seven. I'll go, I'll have to go on this by myself.
Because you've got something else going.
Thursday night's event.
Oh, well, we got twenty fifth, we have, we have a comp plan meeting. I mean, I, I don't know how necessary, Paul, it is for you to be there. But I don't think we can do it. We certainly can't do it in a week because we've got to do notice to abutters.
Will you still be up here? No, you won't be here then.
We won't be here.
Yeah. I think the apples can't feel more comfortable if I was attending.
Yeah, how about the evening? Before the meeting? That's tough, too.
Yeah, that's tough.
Just give you much time.
Right. How about Saturday? I can't do it Saturday, the summer Saturdays for me are, unless we do it another evening.
Do it the evening.
Do it, well. See, I think I'm
Well, you need to notify the abutters.
Yeah. And I I'm not available. Think on the Wednesday.
I mean, if you have to do it on the first, you do it on the first. I should be back. I guess not out of the raft.
Well, that always happens. You don't want the Kennebec or get rid of it.
Come from the hospital, Paul.
If it were.
My grandson's birthday, so.
You want to do it on the first, I
Want us to do it second on the first? The second one, the second one? We'll give you the time, we'll just, let's figure it, we'll get back to you, but if we do it yeah, we'll plan on August first. Try to do it as this. It looks like we have another one we'll have to do just in Sand Pond.
Get all the way lost out. That's as far away as we can go.
Yeah, can't get much further than that. But, all right, we'll figure that out, let, we'll leave me.
All right.
Folks know.
Yeah.
So we'll put it in for August first and put it on time yet?
We'll figure that out probably before the we adjourn tonight. No.
I won't accept the application.
Yeah, let's have a motion to accept the application.
I can make a motion to accept it.
Any discussion? Favor? Do you need to mail or get a copy of this over to Bill Monagall?
Yep. I probably want to do, I'll set the thing up when I drop, but
Yeah. Yeah.
Plan itself, even if you'd be active. What, you'll go into the town office and pay the fee?
They're not open on Friday, it's right.
You know that?
You didn't know it, yes.
You can give me a check and I can drop it.
Okay.
So what we have to do is we have to send out letters to the abutters, letting them know we received the application and it's will be accessible through the town website, so if someone wants to look at it, or they can go into the town. And then we'll have the site visit, the site visit we have, we'll try to get so one of the issues on any project on the lake is how does it impact the watershed? And so we have the Cabessy Watershed District kind of review and make recommendations. How can a project least impact the Wilson Pond, any other ponds in the watershed? And he's really, Bill Monagall, the director, is pretty accommodating and trying to work with everybody to make this work. How old is the camp?
It's been in our family for fifty.
And it's not great condition?
Unfortunately, it's not.
Foundation? Oh, let's see.
I believe it's huge.
No foundation.
Big foundation.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see the picture.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's a lot, yeah. There's still by the railroad guys back in the day.
It was.
Yeah. It's a classic.
Yeah, it is.
So the new one so even that's pretty close to the the hill.
Oh, yes. You have ten feet between the things there.
Yeah, and you need some space to get around if you have to do any work or maintenance.
Now, there is a rock retaining wall that's collapsing, so probably part of the construction would be is to construct a better retaining wall.
Why you have the escalator?
Yeah.
And, and the new building will have what kind of for foundation?
Well, there is a foundation plan in there. Yeah, part of it will be there and part, part of it particularly on the fortune that will be up here, right? The building.
Is the new building going to be, oh, if I remember right, if you looked at the existing building for the water?
Yeah.
The well is off to the left-hand side?
Yeah.
The new building isn't going to go over that? Okay. All right.
The new septic system. So the president's septic system is not in curls, but it would do, which would attack all the of the watershed?
Oh, definitely.
Definitely.
Definitely. It, it's still, the building is still close, closer than the watershed wants it to the water. That's what, that's what they're going to look.
So we have to determine that your new building is set back to the fullest practical extent. So that's one of the reasons we go down to look at it is to see what the topography is. You know, sometimes removing a lot of trees isn't beneficial either, so.
I, I think in the case here obviously, we tried to pull it back as far as we can, try to go back to the service. Be a worse situation. Actually, we take it where it is, plus that slope is also supporting the driveway.
You couldn't find recorded right of ways, right?
On the.
Well, I see you mentioned on the plan.
It's, it's just one of these generic ones, Steve. It says with the right of way or right to the property.
But they've never set it out.
No.
Physically on the, being the lake.
So what is there determines the location.
Yeah.
Line of the river. It's, there's all this stuff paint from the eighteen forties and junk. That's all it just, with the right passage from both sides.
People didn't worry about it.
No.
Yeah.
Let's give those. All right, they can work.
There's the additional cap here. Yeah. Well, we'll give those to the folks that are here and want to look down on it. All right? All right.
Thank you, Stephen.
It sounds good.
It's a five twenty-five, correct?
Yeah. The next business we have is there are many Casa Two LLCs. That must be you folks.
So I have to tell you, my heart just sank when I saw that map. Ours is pretty simple.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the challenge sometimes is, uh, coming up with a scale plan. It's hard to, sometimes hard to do that without professional help.
Right. And we're trying to do this within the amount of money we got from insurance.
Yeah.
So keep it simple and all the help you can give us would be greatly appreciated.
So this is at twenty-three Scott Drive.
Yes.
Sent some pictures in that show some significant DM. And what was pine trees?
It was a, a huge old pine tree. It's in the storm in December.
Basically, nineteen and a half feet back to forty-two.
Yeah, we were planning to kind of rebuild back.
We're gonna rebuild it. We're trying to make it more compliant.
Yeah.
And it would be smaller. It will be further, much further back and a little bit more centered on the lot. It's a narrow lot. We'll move it away from the neighborhood lot line by fifteen.
So you did, oh, you did try to make a sketch, but.
Yeah. The, the builder, uh, helped me with that drawing. No, none of the facts.
And presently, you have a cesspool?
Friends.
You have a plan, any plan to upgrade?
Yes, it would be, it would be a power septic and I submitted that with.
Oh, yeah, I saw you. That's right, I saw you.
We did build it back.
But that'll make it better also.
Yeah. And you look like one of your butters is a, relatives?
My sister. And, and our brother. My brother and I, um, next door.
Next door. And who's on the other side?
Uh, Gary St. Laurent.
The Taj Mahal.
Yes.
Scott Drive.
Yes.
St. Laurent. We've been there a few times, haven't we?
Yeah. Hit the garage, you press on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
On the side of Scott.
So the first thing would be to ex, motion to accept the application?
Accept the application?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Anonymous to accept the application? So what kind of estimate have you gotten to replace?
It was, the cap is two hundred and fifty thousand.
And you're gonna meet that?
Yes, yeah. We have it all priced out with Nathan.
Yeah.
James. And, uh, it's, and our intent is to keep it a small, simple, traditional, you know, so like, it's not gonna be fancy.
Smaller and the simpler one is the faster you get.
Yeah.
So we can.
Yeah, it's a bit slow. But he's slow because, he's good because he's slow.
Inspired many men, just worked many years ago.
That's right. You can work for him.
Right, so he's been, he's been really, really helpful and it's helping us price it out.
Seventy-five.
And he said to us things about, like, when it came in a little too over the first time, he said, well, here's some ways you can cut, you know, some things you can make it.
Right.
You know, not do it quite so expensively.
Sure.
And so he's really trying to help us keep it because our goal is that we've had these camps since the early eighties and it's, you know, the third generation is coming there now and we don't wanna lose them.
Right.
And so our, we're really trying to do it in a way that we can keep it the way it has always has been.
Sure.
And they are almost a hundred years old, so. Nine man, they'll be a hundred years old.
So you're not gonna be able to salvage any of this or part of?
Well, I mean, we did things like took out the old antique paneling and the old touch and some of the windows and doors to reuse them.
Yeah.
But the structure is not, no. Insurance.
Yeah. Foundation is gone. What was the foundation?
It was, it was piers, just like piers. Nathan is proposing that, that it still be piers, but some concrete, so it won't heave.
Below the frost line?
It's the old one heaves every year.
Nathan was gonna do it on piers, concrete.
Yeah, yes.
With the pad.
And the powder.
Yeah.
For the frost.
Yeah.
Yep. As many shaved barns and doors many times.
No fireplace.
No. We had, well, that's one thing we cut. We wanted to put a wood stove and one, and Nathan said, you know, you could cut out a few thousand dollars if you don't put a wood stove. And I don't like putting things through the ceiling anyway. So we've cut that out and probably we'll do a heat pump maybe.
It'd be better off.
Right, yeah.
It's seasonal, right?
Seasonal, and we just want a little bit of heat so we can extend, come a little earlier in the spring, a little later in the fall. But it won't be winterize.
Take some of the dampness out when we get all the rain.
Yeah, and when we have weeks like this week, it'll be a little bit of cooling. Right, I'll be over there.
Right.
Well, looking at your application, it doesn't have. I mean, what do you use for a mailing address?
I use my address in Brunswick.
One fifty-two McKee Street. Yeah, you didn't have Brunswick, but I thought.
Oh, sorry. And there were a few little details I didn't know how to check, for example, what type of permit I was requesting.
Yeah, that's shoreline.
I thought it, and, and then it says current zoning. I assumed it was shoreline, but I.
Yeah, shoreline residential.
Okay, and acreage to be developed. I had the total acreage.
But you have the total acreage of the lot. So one of the things we have to determine, our zoning, shoreline zoning ordinance says that you can't have what's called impervious structures or, what do we wanna say? Driveway or whatever that exceeds twenty percent of the lot size. So I think you're probably okay, but we try to figure out what percentage of your lot is gonna be covered by the building, driveways, walkways, and any accessory buildings. So for instance, if you have a shed or garage.
I think, and Nathan estimated that at six point eight. It's the previous question, acreage to be developed. I, I didn't know. There is, there is shed, it has to be taken down because. And you want to put a shed that same size down. And, but has to be moved to a different place on the, that was Nathan's.
Yeah.
You gotta, gotta convert it into graffiti. You can't use percentages of acres. But it's not, it's not an acre.
Right, so it's six point eight times.
Of the fifty-four.
Right, yeah. But it still looks like it would be well below the twenty percent.
Six point eight percent of the, of the lot.
Yeah, right.
Which is about a half an acre.
Yeah.
Tell me what I need to do and I will do it. You can help me.
Yeah, so we have to charge you a fee.
Yeah.
Based on what you gave us for a figure. I think I came up with two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
So we need a, a check for two seventy-five, which you can deliver to the town office.
Written to the town of Monmouth?
Town of Monmouth and just put shoreline zoning permit on it. And if it's your personal check, you might wanna refer to the Casa Two LLC. And as you heard, we like to do a site visit. Looks like we would do that August first, maybe at five thirty. And it's helpful if, you know, you can be there. We usually invite Cabessy Watershed District to come because they.
We're there for the summer now.
Yeah, so that's not a problem.
What day of the week is it?
That would be a Thursday night.
Does Nathan need to be there?
Sure. If you're gonna have, we might have questions.
Yeah, it would be good if you could get him to.
He's the one that drew it, so.
Probably a good idea. You know, we'll be there twenty minutes, half hour.
Okay, so I'll, I'll talk with him and see if that's hopefully possible.
So once you, if you can pay the fee like the beginning of the week, then we can do what's called notice to the butters. Now, your sister could sign a piece of paper that says, I waive any notice.
I'm willing to do that.
Find a piece of paper and that way we only have to notify.
Rent, right?
Yeah.
Two hundred. It might be more, five hundred feet.
There may be.
Have to look at the map.
Yeah, so we have to notify anyone within five hundred feet of a property lot.
So it might be on the other side of you, it's still less than five hundred feet.
So John Grant would be the other one there.
Yeah, and across the street, even if it's vacant land, you have to notify who owns it.
Across the street, when I pulled her ad, name and address from the town records. So I'm assuming it's accurate. It's somebody from out of state.
It was a Hutter, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He owns that whole.
What's Grant's first name?
John, J O N, Grant. He's at thirty-one, I think. And my brother owns also the house with me, so they're two names.
Well, whoever the managing member of your LLC.
No question.
Okay.
Be careful what you volunteer for. We have to send out a letter to them just saying, you know, we're reviewing it. We usually tell them, you know, that the site visit would be August first. We likely be discussing this on the next meeting, which would be August eighth.
Who is it that you bring? Cabessy Watershed?
Yeah, so the Watershed District, not the Friends of Cabessy Watershed, but there's something called.
Cabessy Watershed District.
Yeah.
We, they know us because we use them to re, restore our, both our waterfronts.
Yeah.
That's not.
Yeah, they're in downtown Winter.
That's, that's Friends of Cabessy, you had to do that.
Oh, I thought it was the.
It's Cabessy Watershed, it's a different entity.
Yeah.
Well, we did do the slow the flow on both properties.
Well, that's good.
Um, years ago.
Yeah. So sometimes, you know, we come and we say, hmm, you know, it'd be a good idea to put plantings between the building and the shore, you know, to stabilize it. I mean, what all the so-called experts say is lawns on the shore aren't the best.
I hate lawns. I, I, I'll tell you that I, I did a project in Brunswick that, where we redeveloped an old convent for a residential recovery program in Lewiston. Sorry, in Lewiston. And we partnered with name Audubon.
Yeah.
Use their, um, bringing nature home program, which was all about not using grass.
Yeah.
And planting all native plants that are burden pollinator friendly. So I've already called them up and Andrew's gonna come out later this summer and advise me on what to do to restore the damage. And so, and we, and over the years, we've already planted probably a dozen hemlocks and spruce and things on the property, some of which got killed when that tree fell. So I, we're ones that like trees and bushes. And when Cabessy did the shorefront, you know, we put in blueberry and creeping juniper and, you know, all that kinda stuff on the shorefront. So I know we're gonna do it. Do you, so, so this person from Cabessy Watershed would give you advice or us advice?
Both, yeah. I mean, we'd like to get him to come if he can to this, to the site visit. If he can't make it, he might get in touch and say, can I come and look?
Okay.
And so he's looking at things that would slow the flow of any water coming, say, from the roofs or driveways. And, you know, so sometimes he will suggest, or will require, you know, that along the drip edge of the building, you, you kinda have some kind of stone, like bed around it, you know, something that, you know, and unfortunately now we're getting these big rain events where the water just comes so quickly. So we'd like to try to find ways to slow the flow of the water. You know, gives us an opportunity when someone comes in to say, we need to do this and we can, you know, and it's usually a cooperative process, you know, that, but, and most people wanna enhance water quality. I mean, you, you don't want algae blooms on your lake in the winter, on summer, so. So we'll, I'll, I'll email, uh, Bill Monigle's executive director. I'll email him a copy of what you've submitted. Let him know and hopefully he can make that visit.
We also have a, a replanning plan because we had the arborist come after the tree fell because there were other, like, there were, the one that fell had the twin right next to it. And we said, what else needs to come out? And that's when we saw you. And we worked with Andy to take out whatever else was dangerous and then have a replanting plan from the arborist.
Bring it, bring it with you next.
I think it's already in Andy's, I have it here.
Oh, yeah, we'll need it. We'll, we'll look at it.
Are you able to, uh?
I take a copy. Yeah, and Andy has a copy of all of that.
Yeah, why don't you copy it?
I'll just take a copy to put it up.
Yeah.
You gotta just two, I think there were two, one is re. Make sure this is all of that.
Do you wanna do Wilson Pond after?
It looks like what I.
You wanna do Wilson Pond?
I'd say.
The ones that you. I'll make it out. It looks like I don't have. All right, that's all. I'll just say, don't have the replant.
Yeah, we'll have enough.
We can bring it to you when you.
And tell Paul. And tell Paulson.
And Andy has it.
Oh, Andy does?
Yeah, he has all of this.
Well, you can always email it.
Yeah, I could email it. I could email it to you.
Email it to me or who emailed? Did someone email me the application?
I, I did, Sarah, I had, Sarah told me that, that it was there and I asked her, I says, can you email it to me and Steve?
And then you, yeah.
Yeah, and then he, I also had, you know, the lot that's further, that's part of the lot that's further back, I also had him go through both our lots. What are other trees that aren't damn, gonna damage a building, but for the health of the forest?
Yeah.
Come down, and he has marked a bunch in the woods, but we don't have to do it anytime soon. Three of those are behind the shed, which is where the septic guy says, we have to take those three down for the shed, for the septic.
For the septic, yeah. So sometimes when you remove trees in the shoreland, you have to replace, like, it's a big tree, it might be three to one.
We have the replanting plan.
So that's good, kind of ahead of the game.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we can make that a whole part of the approval.
Yeah.
You know, at that point, so.
So Andy has all that, we made sure to do it correctly with him.
Yeah. And so usually then, you know, so we'll come back, we'll have the site visit, we'll come back to our August meeting. We should be able to take guarantee, but we should be able to complete the review on the eighth. And if you get approval, then we have to issue a written decision. Sometimes takes a little while, too long. Then when you get done, then you have to get the building permit from Andy.
Well, you have, first you have to wait thirty days for appeal process and then you can get a building permit.
Okay, oh. So we're not, we're looking at, don't demo until September then?
You're looking demo in September.
Okay.
Well, you could, Andy may be able to give a demo permit, you think?
I, I couldn't.
Yeah.
My understanding from Andy is that you don't want to demo until you have the permit in your hands.
Yeah.
Right, I agree with that.
Right.
I agree.
There is a thirty day waiting period?
Yeah, there's a.
Well, there's an appeal period, abutters can appeal.
Our decision.
Our decision.
We can't, unless you went around every abutter and got a letter saying we have no intention of appealing.
They're okay with that, yeah.
I could do that.
Well, that would speed it up.
Might have trouble with that lady sitting next to you though, right?
Brother. Have to pick around.
Figure to do this.
So I could do that. I mean, I, I, I know Gary and Doreen. Donna's great next door.
How do you other, each the lady in Florida?
But that's the only, the across the road would be the only harder one, I think.
Because there's nothing there.
There's no, nothing there and no person.
Donna Hayes has her number. Assessor has her number.
Okay.
So you could always stop in first Tuesday, first or third Tuesday and see the assessor. She's got her contact.
We had a great meeting with her one time because she.
I got it for Donna, so I know she's got it.
So what does that letter, if, does it need to be a formal letter?
It's a statement saying there, there would be no appeal to an approval.
Like it might, you know, they may not be willing to sign that until.
Until the approval.
Till the approval.
Yes.
But that would kind of speed things up for you, actually.
All of them, yeah.
We've got the fee, the site visit at August first at five thirty. Back here, August eighth. And get your decision, get your building permit. Then when you're all done, you have to submit to us post-construction photographs. Go into the town office.
The demo permit?
That's from Andy. Andy would give you a demo permit and a building permit.
Okay.
Or all in one.
All in one, perhaps.
It might be all one, just one.
Okay.
All right. How many people do you have trying to do this on their own without lawyers or consultants?
About half.
Really? That's good. That's, that's better than I thought. That's one.
Right.
See, the problem we run. I said, it's, it's pretty normal to do it, so.
Okay.
The problem we have is that in the shoreline area, I think we're required to file in the registry of deeds, something, you know, a decision and then the sketch to kind of show where things are.
Survey, a plotted survey.
Well, and I don't know what the town will, what the registry will accept. If it's attached to the decision, they might allow it. Um, so it's helpful when we go to the site, it's sort of helpful to see kind of staked out where the new building will be, you know, some type of flagging or something. So when we get there, we can kind of say, okay, you're moving from here to here.
My husband's an engineer, can we do that?
Absolutely.
Oh, that would be great.
We brought our really large tapes.
Absolutely.
Okay, using that drawing, we'll flag it, okay.
Yeah.
And do you, do you need us to find somebody that makes a better map or something?
Or a, or official survey?
And if so.
Well, if your husband's an engineer, can he do something on a CAD just to kind of?
I'll have to ask him.
You know, just so, you know, what we're interested in is where is the old building? Where is the new building? How far from the shore? How far from any abutters? So you have to be ten feet, you know, any building has to be ten feet from your line. So we have to kind of check that. We have a little flexibility as far as setback from the Scott Drive.
You have a plot plan, like of the, of the lot that the game's on?
Yeah, I have an old, old one that's on yellowed paper.
Is it, is it like a big one though?
Yeah.
So you could take that, have it copied and you could draw the scale on that.
Which my husband could do.
Yeah.
He was a draftsman.
Take that and draw the scale on that.
That's perfect.
That would work.
See, then we may have to try to get it reduced somehow.
And then have it reduced.
Copy, send it on two, two can help you.
Copy, send it can do it.
Okay, and reduce, okay. All right, we can do that. And then we'll also stake it out on the lot.
Yeah.
When you come, you can see, you'll see where the old one was.
Well, yes.
And it'll still be there.
What's left of it.
And the old one is, I like, you can spit from the porch to the lake on the old one. I mean, it's, it's, and over the years, it has, it used to go from our house flat and then to the lake and it's totally downhill now because of the erosion over the years, even though we had them come in and put the rip raft and everything and plantings and.
Okay, all right. Do you have any other questions? Like you done our jobs.
Good, we'll see you on the first.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your help in advance of all this. We appreciate it.
Good night.
Good luck.
That.
I think that could be in there, is it in there?
It's weird because I took photocopies of everything and I'm missing the very first page.
Oh my.
I'll just make copy of the first page. I went again, I went and checked the photocopy, see if that looked good.
David. Why can't they get a demo permit beforehand?
Well, they can, but there's no reason to because they can't start until the thirty days is up anyway. And at that point, you might as well just get your permit.
Plus, that's something they could get done so to be ready when they get their permit.
Exactly.
I wouldn't want to.
Down and hauled off.
Right, I wouldn't want to do it though until you're sure you're getting that permit, you know what I mean? That's true. Well, I guess it doesn't matter, I guess it.
Well, the building is sold.
Right, right, you gotta come on anyways, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, they could, but a lot of times it's just really up to the builder. A lot of times, like, you know, if you're gonna get a dumpster, there, you're gonna get two or three dumpsters and you're gonna just continue on working. Thank God, Mr. Workfield. Anthony James.
Worked for me a while and then he was my foreman for a little while.
That's right.
He worked for me for a little while, I mean, then he was my foreman for a while and then he went on his own. Can't remember when it was, quite a while ago.
Fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, well, eighteen years ago, could have been that.
I'd say at least, at least fifteen.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Yeah, he's originally from, what actually is he originally from? Uh, industry, I think, originally, yes.
Well, Steve is, when I get home tonight, I'll email everybody.
He's living in a mall with a couple guys.
Yeah, that's great. He'll be up. And, and you may say they made him.
Filing a, well.
Some kind of. What do they call it?
Inside the twenty, earned his hand.
A planning plan.
They live.
From the ladies?
And going along this for a little while.
Filing what?
They have some kind of planting plan.
Oh, and she's, Andy's got it.
Andy's got it.
She said, yeah, because I gotta know, he had to ask Andy for all the work.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Is that what you just copied? Was that the planting plan?
No, no.
No, it wasn't.
He wasn't sure.
She had it all.
But she said Andy had everything and I don't know where he would put it.
So looking at the minutes, um, we had in the minutes from the last meeting that we expected the Chris Gould and Tony.
Yeah, it should have been on this, it should have been on the agenda.
So we might just put in the minutes from this meeting that they haven't provided a, a full application.
Right.
But it should show up in old version from now on.
Uh, for who? I'm sorry, I was.
Bold, Michelle. Well, have they filed the application?
Well, because they said they were gonna.
They were just doing.
Tabled until July.
They were just doing, making sure that they wouldn't have any issues with what they were doing, like.
Yeah.
Within the meeting.
Right.
Well, I mean, just to see what, what.
Well, I talked to Dawn and she said, because I asked her if she was, that they were gonna be at this meeting and they still said, they said that the engineer hadn't finished all the plans yet, so they were gonna come to the August meeting where they had everything all together. Because they haven't even submitted an application yet.
Right.
There's nothing, we just.
But you want to keep, in the minute book, you want to keep the, the name every month.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, and I think you put in the minutes of this meeting that no application with plan has yet to be submitted.
You're right, just something.
Yeah, so I can put, I can put it on this, in these meetings, minutes?
In this minutes, yes, yeah.
Oh, on those minutes, the June?
The June, ones that we're gonna approve of tonight.
What do you want to put in there? Because I bet application meeting with Chris Gould.
No, no, it should show up on.
On the this, on this agenda.
And, and then mark table.
Okay. All right, so I'll put it on this agenda. Yeah, yeah, as old business, under the old business.
Correct.
Okay, so I'll take that Chris Gould thing, put it on there, all right. I'll do.
The minutes look okay. I don't have the fees done. I think he's got all the things, everything done. It's in his application now.
Yeah, I just don't know, I can't remember what he decided.
Decided, but I, they're all done because it's all computerized. You can't go in and get a permit from.
Yeah.
You have to do it online.
Online, yeah.
Which is a big pain in the butt because these people don't have scanners and they can't scan their prints in.
Have to make sure it was in at least a PDF, so.
Yeah. And, you know, it's driving people crazy. I'm even not, I'm, I even had trouble, believe it or not, with Big Saw. There was some stuff in there that they could not get computerized for some reason, to get it to Andy.
So you can't drop off a packet either?
Why?
Well, should be able to drop off a packet of tanks. Like the application, no?
I don't think so. He didn't even come in Monday.
No?
He's doing it from home.
You missed a beat.
So minutes okay?
Yeah, well, there's a couple things. So we have a motion to accept the minutes.
Oh, okay, taking a motion.
Second. Somebody was here.
Raise your hand.
You're three now.
Okay, all right. So I'm looking at four B.
Yeah.
So the last thing you have, Darcy, is motion by Larry, seconded by David, that the application is complete. That should be moved up to after, and I think it's a the sixth line after attached. And you've moved that up behind the attached that, so we want the application complete first. So this.
Okay, yep.
This needs to go right here. This, this, this last.
Yep.
Motion.
This last motion, over here.
Yeah. So that's all I have on on B. Anyone else have something on D, four D? And then on five A. Uh, one, two, three. So where it says Steve told Paul, I'd say board told Paul.
Yeah, all right.
Did you see that? Uh, under five B.
On the second page.
Second page.
Instead of saying Steve, he wants me to replace Steve with Board. Yeah.
Um, it might have been me, but I don't think anyone took issue with it, but I'd rather have it say Board. I don't have any other. Changes, anyone have any others? Well, in favor of accepting the minutes with those changes. No public comment?
Nah, I'm leaving that out from now on.
No, I'd read.
I can stay. I actually forgot on email.
I, I put it up. I don't know if anyone's there.
I didn't, I kept looking over, I didn't see it.
Yeah. Um, I haven't talked to the town manager about where we stand with the town planner.
That was the question of the night. Last night at the Suttermans meeting, they discussed it and they Justin told the board that he, they would like to keep that going, but Dave was there. They didn't make any decisions. So their plan is, I think, is to use the undesignated fund balance to, uh.
Pay for the comp.
Pay for, no, to pay for the administration, that shortfall.
Yeah.
And a couple other things that, that service that has to be paid, that got voted down, well, that has to be paid, otherwise we go into fall. Uh, and two other things, so, but there's gonna be a, a vote coming up to do that, but not add any more money to the, to the.
The only thing we have on the, on the comp plan.
They're gonna reduce those previous budgets down to take that four items out and then just use the fund balance because there's a rebate coming from the Thompson Hall, uh, air conditioning, that's a hundred grand. So that's gonna replenish the fund balance for, so the taxpayers really don't see an impact.
Yeah. You know, they made a commitment to Isabel.
Stop the recording.
Yes.
Just in case, Steve and I got it right or wrong.